Post meeting the board supervisors, order, start with the legislature.
Let the legislature do the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united out, individual, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call please.
Mr. Moron has been excused. Mr. Harrington?
Here.
Mr. Maryhew?
Here.
Mr. Jackson?
Here.
Mr. Depot?
Here.
Mr. Wilson?
Here.
Mr. Monty?
Here.
Mr. McNally?
Here.
Mr. Skazaba?
Here.
Mr. Deloria?
Here.
Mr. Fleety?
Here.
Mrs. Zalio?
Here.
Mr. Marnell?
Here.
Mr. Montroy?
Here.
Mr. Jordana?
Here.
Mr. Tyler?
Here.
Mr. Gullen?
Here.
And Mr. Preston?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have no guests this morning, so we'll go direct with resolutions.
Resolution number fourteen, upraising appointments to boards committees and or councils.
Moved by Mr. Monty, second by Mr. Maryhew, discussion. Be done all in favor?
Aye.
Close. Parrot.
Resolution number fifteen, authorizing Essex County Health Department to apply for and accept various grants from Island and Health Institute.
Moved by Mr. Harrington, second by Mrs. Zalio. Scottson? Be done. Roll call please.
Mr. Harrington?
Yes.
Mr. Maryhew?
Yes.
Mr. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Depot?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Monty?
Yes.
Mr. McNally?
Yes.
Mr. Skazaba?
Yes.
Mr. Deloria?
Yes.
Mr. Fleety?
Yes.
Mrs. Zalio?
Yes.
Mr. Marnell?
Yes.
Mr. Montroy?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Tyler?
Yes.
Mr. Gullen?
Yes.
And Mr. Preston?
Yes.
Resolution carries. Resolution number sixteen, condolence to the family of Dr. Joshua S. Schwarzenberg.
Moved by Mr. Jackson.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Resolution number seventeen, approving issuance by the Essex County Capital Resource Corporation of certain tax act called by five oh one C three revenue bonds to finance a project for North Country School in the town of North Elbow County of Essex, New York.
Moved by Mr. Fleety, second by Mr. Monty, discussion. Be done. Roll call please.
Mr. Harrington?
Yes.
Mr. Maryhew?
Yes.
Mr. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Depot?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Monty?
Yes.
Mr. McNally?
Yes.
Mr. Skazaba?
Yes.
Mr. Deloria?
Yes.
Mr. Fleety?
Yes.
Mrs. Zalio?
Yes.
Mr. Marnell?
Yes.
Mr. Montroy?
Yes.
Mr. Jordana?
Yes.
Mr. Tyler?
Yes.
Mr. Gullen?
Yes.
And Mr. Preston?
Yes.
Resolution carries. Resolution number eighteen, upraising the community resources department to apply for and accept a near established department of state local government efficiency grant.
Moved by Mr. Marnell, second by Mr. Piper, discussion. Be done. Roll call please.
Mr. Harrington?
Yes.
Mr. Maryhew?
Yes.
Mr. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Depot?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Monty?
Yes.
Mr. McNally?
Yes.
Mr. Skazaba?
Yes.
Mr. Deloria?
Yes.
Mr. Fleety?
Yes.
Mrs. Zalio?
Yes.
Mr. Marnell?
Yes.
Mr. Montroy?
Yes.
Mr. Jordana?
Yes.
Mr. Tyler?
Yes.
Mr. Gullen?
Yes.
And Mr. Preston?
Yes.
Resolution carries. Resolution number nineteen, authorizing the issuance of our permit to Lake Placid Marathon Inspirational Sports, Inspiration Sports LLC for use of the county roadways for the 2019 Lake Placid Marathon and Half Marathon upon approval of the county attorney.
Moved by Mrs. Fleety, second by Mr. Depot, discussion. Be done. All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Carries.
Resolution number twenty, upraising contract amendments to Department of Public Works contracts.
Moved by Mr. Depot, second by Mr. Maryhew, discussion. Be done. Roll call please.
Mr. Harrington?
Yes.
Mr. Maryhew?
Yes.
Mr. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Depot?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Monty?
Yes.
Mr. McNally?
Yes.
Mr. Skazaba?
Yes.
Mr. Deloria?
Yes.
Mr. Fleety?
Yes.
Mrs. Zalio?
Yes.
Mr. Marnell?
Yes.
Mr. Montroy?
Yes.
Mr. Jordana?
Yes.
Mr. Tyler?
Yes.
Mr. Gullen?
Yes.
And Mr. Preston?
Yes.
Resolution carries. Resolution number twenty-one, authorizing Essex County purchasing agent to go to bid for various projects in the Department of Public Works.
Moved by Mr. Marnell, second by Mr. Monty, discussion. Be done. All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Carries.
Resolution number twenty-two, authorizing the issuance of our permit to the IRM Placid for the use of the county roadways for the 2019 IRM Triathlon Race on July twenty eighth, two thousand and nineteen, and for the two thousand and nineteen IRM seven point three triathlon race on September eighth, two thousand and nineteen.
Moved by Mr. Fleety, second by Mr. Depot, discussion. Be done. All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Carries.
Resolution number twenty-three, authorizing real property tax services office to adopt a healthy food beverage and loans policy.
Moved by Mr. Monty, second by Mr. Deloria, discussion. Be done. All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Carries.
Resolution number twenty-four, authorizing the implementation and funding of first instance hundred percent of the federal aid and state aid, state motorcycle program, need eligible class of transportation funded project and appropriate funds therefore.
Moved by Mr. Tyler, second by Mr. Depot, discussion. Be done. Roll call please.
Mr. Harrington?
Yes.
Mr. Maryhew?
Yes.
Mr. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Depot?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Monty?
Yes.
Mr. McNally?
Yes.
Mr. Skazaba?
Yes.
Mr. Deloria?
Yes.
Mr. Fleety?
Yes.
Mrs. Zalio?
Yes.
Mr. Marnell?
Yes.
Mr. Montroy?
Yes.
Mr. Jordana?
Yes.
Mr. Tyler?
Yes.
Mr. Gullen?
Yes.
And Mr. Preston?
Yes.
Resolution carries. Resolutions from the floor, upraising the chairman of the board and or county manager to make interdepartmental and interdepartmental budget transfers for the twenty eighteen Essex County budget.
Moved by Mr. Skazaba?
I need twelve of them.
Do I need twelve of them? Twelve bring on the floor?
Yes, thank you.
Second by Mr. Jackson, discussion. Be done. Roll call please.
Mr. Harrington?
Yes.
Mr. Maryhew?
Yes.
Mr. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Depot?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Monty?
Yes.
Mr. McNally?
Yes.
Mr. Skazaba?
Yes.
Mr. Deloria?
Yes.
Mr. Fleety?
Yes.
Mrs. Zalio?
Yes.
Mr. Marnell?
Yes.
Mr. Montroy?
Yes.
Mr. Jordana?
Yes.
Mr. Tyler?
Yes.
Mr. Gullen?
Yes.
And Mr. Preston?
Yes.
Resolution carries. Resolution, authorizing appointment of two members to Essex County Ethics Board.
The twelve bring on the floor, please.
Yes, we do.
Thank you. Moved by Mr. Jackson, second by Mr. Fleety, discussion. Mr. Mike?
Does this fill the board?
No. We're having trouble finding people.
So how many do we now have?
We do not have three. We have two, one of them just submitted a recommendation. We've got other things going, so he's out, so we'll be advertising for the next three. Hope you guys know anyone in the towns that want to swim. Encourage them to get all of those.
Thank you. Mr. Fleety?
I believe that the name Lynn is spelled wrong.
Okay.
I believe it's M C G L Y N N.
Okay, thank you.
Could you check that, please?
I love it. Thank you.
Further discussion? Be done. All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Carries.
And just a clarification, Carl will be on the net with these people that spoke to his presence where these people were down, so they were interviewed properly and gave us that.
Resolution, authorizing payment of five thousand nine hundred and seventy-nine dollars and seventy-eight cents to Brooke Brown in exchange for her allowance to the county of Essex of property bearing town of North Elbow, tax map number three three point one eight dash one dash three point two two zero.
Moved by Mr. Maryhew, second by Mr. Fleety.
Sorry.
About twelve on the floor, please.
Yes, thank you.
All right. Discussion? Be done. Roll call please.
Mr. Harrington?
Yes.
Mr. Maryhew?
Yes.
Mr. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Depot?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Monty?
Yes.
Mr. McNally?
Yes.
Mr. Skazaba?
Yes.
Mr. Deloria?
Yes.
Mr. Fleety? Mrs. Zalio?
Yes.
Mr. Marnell?
Yes.
Mr. Montroy?
Yes.
Mr. Jordana?
Yes.
Mr. Tyler?
Yes.
Mr. Gullen?
Yes.
And Mr. Preston?
Yes.
Resolution carries. Authorizing reappointment of Michael Tyler to the Westport to the Lake Champlain Lake George return from the board.
The twelve lie on the floor, please.
Yes, thank you.
Moved by Mr. Skazaba, second by Mr. Harrington, discussion. Be done. All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Carries.
Resolution introducing proposed local law number three of two thousand and thirteen, a local law providing for additional and related duties of the office of the Essex County coroner pursuant to authority ran in county law section six seven one two.
Moved by Mr. Fleety, second, I said about twelve lie on the floor?
Yes.
Moved by Mr. Fleety, second by Ms. Harrington, discussion.
I just want to turn around on this. I realize this is just been placed on a desk today, but I wanted to get a little pipeline. I didn't know we're just introducing this right now. The next step is now just public hearing, and then to get this as a public hearing, and definitely we pass it or not pass it, I don't know what we mean. So the like was getting introduced today, it's a public hearing day. You guys give time to do with time. They look at this like digestive combo.
Mr. Skazaba?
Dan, weren't some of the major just briefly changes in this from what they're currently doing?
Okay, so the corners, the state of New York has an actual law that regulates corners, and when that happens, we have to adhere to what the law sets. This particular law also within it allows for us to make certain rules and regulations regarding the corners. It's come, firstly, from Chairman Gillen, is asking me to look at some of the problems here that have been brought up, even in the newspapers, blown out portion, but they're there. There are problems relative to transportation bodies. I don't know how, it's been stated that some of the corners transporting bodies in their personal vehicles, which is not good, you know, leaving low people in the car, et cetera. So we're regulating that. The response to calls, there's been claims that certain of the corners are not actually attending calls. The law requires that they be present at the scene, and there are some corners that simply are doing this by telephone, which is not something they want. There are things where we want a central dispatch. A lot of times, I'm not saying this is wrong, but this is human nature. A lot of the law enforcement agencies or ambulance people, they have pet corners that they call while applying, it seems. So we want to have a set system of dispatch, which is not only fair to the corners, but fair and good for the seats whereby the closest geographically available corner would be dispatched, and then there'd be a hierarchy, a pecking order where you go. We're also changing some of the fees involved. There was a fee that a corner was paid for three hundred dollars for transport, where in this local law, I'm indicating that corners not transport anymore, that licensed funeral home drivers transport because they have the necessary wherewithal, the proper equipment, the proper train, and the proper insurance. We don't outfit our people with special vehicles or special equipment, and so I feel that it's in our best interest that transportation be done by quite a few home drivers. Documentation, we want to kind of shore up the documentation of cases. Training is a big issue. The state of New York, section, I think section six seventy-nine, they finally have mandated an introductory course for corners, but that's about it. We want to make sure that our corners are up to date on, you know, blood passage and training, mask help, fatality, path, casualty training, opioid training is going to become a big thing. So we want to be able to have the ability to send them to whatever trainings we want. We also want to know if there's an availability of a certain corner, or on vacation for a spent period of time, or if they're sick for real. We want them to notify so that they're not held up and trying to find a corner, and we don't, and that one's not going to give them anyway. Giving you additional latitude to also by resolution through this local law, establish rules and regulations related to corners. If they arise in the future, if you find something that you want to kind of tweak, but this will allow you to do that by resolution, so you don't have to go through a local law. And we, there are other things. So people look at.
Mr. Piper?
Can you give me a little background of where you, why these changes came about, and where did you get the information to make these changes? I'm just thinking of the legality of changing what we have now, if it's prudent or if it's illegal. I mean, it's come up through discussions for complaints, essentially, some corners making, you know, pointing out holes, I guess we had in the way that we were running the corner process here. We kind of went, I mean, I think we, Dan had gone through pretty much an exhaustive process of looking into the law. We took a look at what the county's role is in corners. There is county corner law out there, which means quite a bit of latitude to the boards of supervisors or legislative county bodies to set the rules ready, execution, you know, to guide execution of the corners, and which this county did not have prior. So there had been, as Dan talked about, some of the complaints, there were some of the accusations out there of how things were running. I actually, I just, we had a discussion with one, with two, two corners, we had a discussion with, I had a discussion with the state police, I had a discussion with the district attorney, on everything, which I talked to Dan, you know, talked to Dan about, and then he drafted this law, this proposed law. So we, we're not, you know, based on past practice, I don't think we're outside of any, I don't think we're in legal jeopardy of a thing, because we, the board had not been passed execute regulation of how the corners were operating within the county.
I'm just curious, maybe if any other counties could look at Alerean, there's.
Yeah. As Sean said, we, I think we did take a pretty exhaustive look at this. Sean arranged a meeting with one of the corners, with Mr. Whitelaw, who pretty much had a lot of knowledge in this department, I mean, and we took in all he had to say. We probably had an hour and a half meeting with him. I spoke to a consultant who offered his services, but at this juncture, I don't want to pay three hundred fifty dollars an hour, until we kind of, you know, we want to see where we're going. Exhaustively with him, I probably had three telephone conversations with him that maybe lasted forty-five minutes apiece. Got a lot of input from him. I did check other counties to see if they had any such local laws, and they really didn't. Doesn't mean we can't do this. The law does say that we can set any additional rules and regulations. I searched for similar local laws in other states, just to get an idea, but we got some stuff. I also spoke to, I can't remember the guy's name, but he was president of the State of New York Corners Association. Got a lot of positive feedback from him. And this issue, some of these issues have been brewing since like, I think, two thousand, late two thousand eighty-six, one eight, and so I think it's time to make the interest, so that corners know what the playing field is, and we know what the playing field is. And then, you know, the articles somewhere in the newspaper were pretty jingoistic. They were, you know, they just blew everything out of proportion. As everything, you know, when some guy comes to you and tells you a story, you know, your interpretation of that story might be way different. And so those newspaper articles.
That's what my concern is, is listening to one employee and not all of them. Well, change should be done.
I understand your point, and that employee, you're probably thinking the same way I am, and we just, what I do is, I listen and take from everybody, whether I like them, trust them, believe them, I want to get all the information I can and educate myself, and if some of what they say is valid, we take that. If some of it isn't valid, we don't do that, you know. So there is stuff that's coming from many areas. And as Sean said, he spoke to the DA and the state police and.
I mean, I'll say that, I mean, this, this is, this is nothing compared to an exhaustive list of recommendations we got from others. I mean, this is bare bones only. Mr. Skazaba?
Yeah, this has been going on for longer than, goes back into the ninety some of it. I think this is good. It's needed. We've had to help their scale their operation there for years. But now we heard from corners, and also heard from funeral directors and so on. So this is something that absolutely needs to be put in place, so everybody, a lot of playing field, the corners, they all know what to do, these are responsibilities up. But this brings the player to the board that's been missing for the time around.
Mr. Marnell?
If you only had two, though, almost everybody takes a vacation. That's what's going to happen then. If you have to call them, look them, you got to call them.
Everybody. Yeah, we need to cover the county. This, this, this one is, we're trying to introduce this one, move forward. This one, we're going to introduce because we don't have a, you know, we have to, this needs a little bit more work, but I really want, Dan and I wanted to put this out there, to take a look at it, because we do have the right to regulate the number of corners in the county you want. And so I think we need to take a close look at how we're going to do that, take a close look at how we divide up the territory, et cetera. So on this one, we're asking everybody to take a look at it, center it, you know, get some input, and we'll come back, we can introduce them at a later time. Mr. Mike?
Yes, that's, that's my question, because I have some questions here pertaining to this. This doesn't, by introducing this, it does a lot. The same if we change the language in this, do we have to have another public hearing?
We do, but that's okay. I mean, at least we get it before you ask. If they have other ideas, like, you know, so we would have to have another.
I think, number one, the IRS mileage is fifty-eight cents as a junior report.
That would be substantial.
And, but then, I'd like to see us have a process for submitting vouchers.
We do have that. I'm not to put that in the local law. In the general part of local law, which is a good point, I've got a bunch of forms, vouchers, call records, dispatch records for the sheriff's department, that I've called from Meredith, and this consultant gave me a couple.
Another question would be about the presence of autopsy, if an autopsy is during, be necessary. I'd like to see a corner be present there during an autopsy.
The autopsy issue is a good issue. I didn't address it because I wasn't sure really at the time how to address it, but we could, we can, I kind of did, but I kind of didn't. We can put more specific language in there. What we can do, let's get it introduced, get a public hearing set for, we could put it off for like, you know, a month and a half, but let's just get it introduced, get public comment, then we can break the comment, then we can amend it, do what we have to do.
And my last question is, I had a couple of people tell me about a corner, wow, he has a legal concealed carry permit, carrying a firearm and picking up a body. I personally have an issue with that, because he is a county employee outside of law enforcement. We don't have any other county employees carrying firearms and doing their duty. Are you sure? My.
Mr. Jackson?
I think this is good. I've had people complain over the years when I've been on scene of a COVID, that somebody, coroner pulls up and puts the body in their minivan and stuff, that they didn't think that was appropriate. So I think this is a good change. One concern I have, and not so much with this, but the other one we're not going to do much with, is if you're reducing the money they get for transporting, and you're increasing the workload from one-third to one-half, I think you have to look at what the pay rate is, so we have people that want the job. We don't, we don't want to have a distant job that nobody wants. So I think in that part, we need to look at the pay rates a lot.
That's a good point.
I mean, we can adjust the pay rates and things like that, beyond the law by resolution.
Yeah.
Mr. Mike?
Well, that was my, my question. The four thousand dollars they get just for being a corner, then you get a hundred dollars for answering the phone, again, like a call.
Um, whatever I heard, thought so many times. Yes, well, you take the hundred dollars away.
It's good.
I know, I put this in here for discussion, so that is one thing that I'm kind of fascinated with, whether I should take that out. It was one fifty, so, you know, I was told by another county that they gave a coroner a thousand dollars, but they gave a hundred fifty dollars a pickup, and then they're, they're making money because of the body. So that I did kind of wrestle with, but by the same token, as Mr. Jackson said, you got paid, you got something, so that we get, you know.
Oh, we're not reducing the number of corners. We still have four corners.
Right, no, I get it.
You still have four corners splitting up the work. If they're not taking the call, then the issue lies with the coroner's not taking a call.
If they don't take the call, they don't get the hundred dollars, so. No, I mean, I just, I open the suggestion.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's something we.
Additive this thing.
We can have a debate.
But this is a point. I wrestled with it, just threw it in there, saying, well, we'll put it in there, so we come up with it. You can compare that, there was a resolution, and probably it was you guys again. I'll get you the old resolution of the TV still, so I can see others.
Mr. Skazaba?
I think one thing, I keep referring to them as employees, they're elected officials, you know. I mean, they are elected by the people of this county to do a job, or just point out what their duty should be. As far as carrying a pistol, I mean, that could imply any member of this board of supervisors that may have a concealed permit to carry. So, I mean, I have disagreement with you respectfully, Mr. Mike, of the pistol. That's an elected official who know more than, than were elected officials, so. So we can carry it legally in here?
I'm hiring right now.
I know better, Tom. I see you.
My, the point, the point I'm trying to make is we're elected officials, and after a while, we're hired, and they're elected. You know, that's the thing, that's concerning. They're elected, and we can only do so much now. But that law allows us to regulate, and I can't remember the word is, but, and, and doesn't make their duties.
Mr. Montroy?
We had the meeting with Frank that one time, and we had talked about possibly lowering salary and increase the fee to show up, that would entice them to show up to the scene and not, you know, not miss somebody that doesn't answer calls, that gets a good pay. They're gone half the year, and they're getting a good salary for doing nothing. If we lowered the salary, it would increase participation.
Right now, I can't lower the salary because it's been set, and, I'm not sure, I've got to check. I think it might be, because they have a four-year term, they might not be able to lower the salary, but it doesn't make sense, so I can check that, to see if we can, when we publish every year, we publish the salaries, and we have to, but blah blah, maybe my next year, we can change the salary, and that's, that would be a consideration, maybe do the per call thing.
Mr. Mike?
Dan, I, so who can keep the salary the same, but you get paid each quarter, and if you don't respond to the call in that quarter, you get nothing?
Yeah, if you don't respond anyway, you don't get anything.
No, no, but of the salary. You can't change the base salary.
Yeah, I can't, yeah, once it's set, because they're elected officials.
But in the future, then, if you do that, though, someone, you've got a corner, but if they don't respond to the call in a quarter, the salary.
They're always going to get the base salary. Right, and you have to pay them. Because they're elected positions, you have to establish a salary. They have to be equal among all the elected positions, and if they don't show up, or they pick up the Florida, if there's nobody that can do anything by it, except for the governor. Again, my thing in here, a lot of this is, you know, let's, let's go with the salary now, do this, and see how we make out. But I'm hoping this.
Mr. Fleety?
Dan, Dan Palmer, do you have an idea of the range of revenue these corners make? Not just the salary, what kind of range of revenue, what payment do they get?
Well, if you're asking what, you know, I have one corner, and they thirty-two thousand in two thousand and seventeen.
Thirty-two?
Thirty-two thousand. The other corners were nowhere near that. If you compare the call volume, there was like sixty-five deaths, and like fifty-four of them were attended by that one corner.
There were how many deaths?
Like sixty-five, if you can.
Then how many he?
He attended, I think it was like fifty-five.
Fifty-four.
So the one corner is obviously making the most money, but he's the one showing up.
I'm going to tell you, I spent Friday night with him.
him on the fourth of July. And uh, he did a wonderful job.
He does a good job.
He did enough.
Mr. Montra. Again, is, uh, which is the other that you mentioned, isn't that some of that reimbursement?
No, most of them, I looked at, it was mostly all um, we pay them, but they buy along the.
Is that through mileage?
Uh, yeah, that would be mileage.
So there's some, there's 150 coffees and those things that are associated with it.
Oh, there's some reimbursement in that?
There's some reimbursement, minor amounts, but that would be represented.
Mrs. DeZelie.
Dan, um, you mentioned that the case files and the annual report would go to the clerk of the board. Um, I do know one coroner already reports annually to the county clerk's office. And there's a system in place there.
Okay.
Um, but it is only one out of our coroners that's reporting.
Where is that anyway?
Um, section 11, documentation of filing of cases.
Okay. Okay, that followed that. Is that Mr. Waylon?
Yes.
Any further discussion? Ding, no roll call please.
Should we have to call the young date?
Yes, um.
Do you have it this month?
Yeah, let's get moving, so people can come.
We can do it, um, ways and means.
Yeah.
The 23rd, not the 24th.
Nine thirty?
Twenty-four.
Five. Do you have a second?
I don't know, I'm just thinking that.
Make it nine o'clock.
Yeah.
Nine o'clock?
Nine.
Okay, Mr. Harrington?
Yes.
Mr. Maryho?
Yes.
Mr. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Depot?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Monti?
Yes.
Mr. McNally?
Yes.
Mr. Skozbaba?
Yes.
Mr. Deloria?
Yes.
Mr. Fleety?
Yes.
Mrs. Cecilia?
Yes.
Mr. Marnell?
Yes.
Mr. Montra?
Yes.
Mr. Jordano?
Yes.
Mr. Tyler?
Yes.
Mr. Blumen?
Yes.
And Mr. Preston?
Yes.
Resolution carries.
So, all right, we're on this, the second resolution, or resolution introducing one of the next local law, uh, that's just out there for you guys to peruse. And now we'll take care of that, uh, if you want to get a comment. Uh, basically, uh, the law allows us to reduce the number of coroners that you should so desire to any number you want, less than four. Uh, this, the way I adapt to this is I reduce it to two. Uh, and it would, it also, the law allows you to establish geographical uh areas of responsibility for each of those two. Um, so give some thought to that. If you wanna do that, then we'll, we'll put that in the mix. Uh, this law's a permissive referendum. Uh, and once it goes through that process, it would be a lot. Uh, in, when the law will pass, basically, December 31st of the year, once the law is passed, uh, those quarters that are already in the hop are gone. Uh, there'd be election in November, they have, would have the opportunity to run for one of those one or two positions. Uh, the resolution in local law has been placed 150 days, uh, before next general election in November. Uh, so we have time to kind of address this. Just throwing it out there for you to take a look at. Thank you. That's it.
That's all I have.
All right, um, Mr. Jackson.
But those already elected, they still have a term, correct?
No, no, what would happen is.
Eliminate the people's term.
Yes, what would happen is, um, November's the election, so everybody who's already a coroner would have an opportunity to run. Uh, and the only two would be chosen, the other two that still had a term, the term, they would continue to, to, they all would continue until December 31st of that year. Starting January, two coroners would take, would take over. Anything further, any resolutions?
Yes.
Mr. Scotts father.
Yes, I'd like to move a resolution in opposition to the governor's removal of the aim. Revenues for towns, villages, cities in his thousand budget, that has a substantial impact on my community, it's going to cost 75,000 dollars, which, you know, that puts me in a hole already. If you take that 75,000, equate it to our taxable value, that's like 30,000 dollars in a hundred thousand dollar hole. It's, it's substantial.
Do I have a brain on the floor?
Yes, you do.
Have a second?
Second.
Dan, a second? Thank you. Any further coming for the board? Mr. Maryho?
Um, yes, Chair, but for your consideration, I, uh, the clerk had CC'd the board on the Boquet River Association, um, and some of the progress and process that they have experienced up at our local swimming home here, it's what I call, they've offered to, on their own, supply a regular porta potty. They already pick up the trash and things like that. The D E C has, as you can read, gotten back to them and will not allow a regular porta potty. They're requiring a handicapped accessible porta potty. Um, I know they're up and down the road, uh, getting into keen, keen battle souls. I'm asking for is just a resolution of support for the D E C to address the situation here on Elizabeth.
Well, that, that's on the floor?
Yes, you do.
Second? Dan, a second? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Any further coming for this? Mr. Maryho?
Uh, yes, thank you again, Mr. Chairman. Um, I will defer to the county manager on the consideration of, okay, a stipend to the designated deputy county clerk. Are we prepared for that today?
I guess, Joe hasn't gotten back to me, so I don't know, you know, in terms of, he asked for the two, I'm not sure, you know, what direction he wants to go, but the one that's a C S D A member, that he's not gonna be allowed to, um, have that. It also came to my attention that he has a number of acting deputies. Uh, Mrs. DeZelie pointed out to me that there are a number of acting deputies still named over there that I'm not, that Mr. Manning look at. I'm not sure if some of those are appropriate either, only because I think they're union members. I'm not sure that he can go ahead and name any union members as acting deputies. Uh, you know, you can, um, what he asked for was a $5,000 stipend for the one position, which is, which based upon the fact that that individual is not a C S D A member, so he could do that in terms of that and name that particular deputy. Um, the second one, um, he is a, is a union member, so in my view, and I think Dan agrees that, um, they can't hold that position. So I'm not sure what his solution is for that, um, because he hasn't come forward.
The true court has a board authorize, a me to authorize the stipend payments once they're sorted out. That's really. Okay, and then that would allow, because she has been active in that capacity, the deputies.
And again, you know, technically you can have anybody doing the deputy position. It always comes down to whether they could pay their minds up at this point. So you can ask somebody, actually, you could ask anybody to be an acting deputy or a deputy over there, provided they don't violate the rules and the laws that are out there. But, um, the question of whether it's paid or not is always up to this.
Mr. Scotts father.
There can be any appointments of deputies over there, any department. This board absolutely should be setting the stipend or whatever you wanna call it. We should know about it.
Absolutely. We always look that way.
So, well, I mean, I heard about this from employees over in county clerk's office, and we had proposed 3,500 for one employee, 500 for another employee. That supposedly was in the budget. But I'm just saying, this is how morale dives down to its deepest levels when you got this kind of stuff going on. You know, you got employees that might be favorites, getting raised.
I don't know who said that it was in the budget, it was not in the budget. The position of full deputy was in the budget, which provides a huge amount of funding that you can use for this if you choose to go back to the board for, we should do so. Um, the fact that I wasn't here for a couple of days doesn't help. You're explaining, doesn't change the fact that, um.
No criticism of you.
You, I can't.
You explained it, you explained it very well.
We're gonna come back to the board for the things that we have to come back for.
All right. Your sir? Mr. Monty?
I just think until Joe gets everything squared away, we ought to just sit down until, I'm not against it at all, but until Joe clarifies what he wants to do, we should just wait.
I agree.
Up to you guys. I, I don't have an issue either.
Anything, anything further to come before the board? The board, Mr. Fleety?
I, um, I need a resolution of condolence to the family of our Dennis Allen. Dennis was the manager of the Olympic Convention Center in Brink's for 35 years, and he died Friday night.
Twelve lives on the floor, please?
Yes, we do.
Thank you. Second? Thank you. Anything further to come before this board? Um, Mr. Manning? Uh, just a couple of quick ones. Um, we have an existing contract with ESBC Civil Affairs Area, which we, we have assigned to Shore Rivers in regards to, uh, Gulf Brook and B Brook Phase Three project. It, uh, we need a simple amendment to the contract extending the date of completion to December 31st, 2019. Let's see, a motion and a second, and a roll call. The twelve lives on the floor?
Yes, we do.
Okay, do a motion and a second, please. Do it by Mr. Marnell, started by Mr. Depot. Discussion? Do you need a roll call, please?
Mr. Harrington?
Yes.
Mr. Maryho?
Yes.
Mr. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Depot?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Monti?
Yes.
Mr. McNally?
Yes.
Mr. Skozbaba?
Yes.
Mr. Deloria?
Yes.
Mr. Fleety?
Yes.
Mrs. Cecilia?
Yes.
Mr. Marnell?
Yes.
Mr. Montra?
Yes.
Mr. Jordano?
Yes.
Mr. Tyler?
Yes.
Mr. Blumen?
Yes.
And Mr. Preston?
Yes.
Resolution carries.
Okay, uh, one other, uh, similar resolution. We currently have a preschool transportation contract with a company by the name of Durin. Uh, we went out to bid, uh, because Durin's contract expired, uh, on the January 31st. Uh, bids came back, we didn't get good bids, so we wanna redid it. But in the interim, uh, while we're redidding this, we wanna extend the existing contract with Durin, but it just expired until August 31st of this year, so it gets us through the school year, the summer school year. Um, the rate for transport students, we're giving the same order of rate for a student with an aid will be, uh, I think it's 169 dollars. So basically, I like resolution and a second, motion and a second, authorizing, extension of the contract with Durin, Durin product, products, uh, this is a preschool, to extend it August 31st, 2019. Twelve lives on the floor?
Yes, we do.
Do you hear a motion? Moved by Mr. Marnell, second, by Mr. Fearon. Discussion? Do you need none? I'm sorry, it's guarantee?
I've always had a problem with having to have uh, transportation specifically for preschool students when you already have transportation for regular ed students. You need to realize that these preschool, uh, uh, students are within the families that the regular transportation, uh, supplies, uh, transportation to schools for. The minute that these kids, uh, are no longer qualified for preschool, they can then ride on the regular buses. I think that, that we're just, uh, throwing good money away by doing this. We say that the laws, uh, for special ed kids is to create the least restrictive environment possible. And here, within transportation, you're creating a very restricted environment. So it's, it's really an upside down law.
I agree with you. Uh, it's a huge expense list, too. Not that it shouldn't be done, but I'm mandated by law to proceed in this way, and so we have other options. Is this, is, is public health, Mike, for your end?
Yes, yes. Well, yeah, preschool education is always big, and people don't realize this, you know, preschool education is always being provided by the counties. It's not a school expense, it's not something that the schools even essentially involve themselves in terms of the expenses. What they do give a bump there, and they help to determine is the level of service, um, but we, as a county government, is forced to pay for that.
Further discussion?
And we've had that discussion too, though. We've had that discussion with schools about them transporting these preschool students. They thought they can't do it. Now, I don't know why they can't do that. I don't know if the education rule is associated with, I know a number of times, because of the expense associated with transportation of preschools, that we look at it differently, so trying to come up with reduction in costs. And unfortunately, we just get stepped, left holding back.
The guarantee.
I would hope that down the road, that the mayor of state legislature, uh, would look at all the concerns that we do have with preschool. This is where the, the answer is going to be found to that. I know, having been a chair of the preschool committee, uh, that with, uh, a part of that committee are special education teachers within the educational department. And they say, okay, the county is paying for this education, so throw every service that you possibly can think of at them, because the county pays for it. Now, if it were under the school district's budgetary flag, there would be a little more script. And that's, that's where the problem rests.
And it is, and we do, we, our public health people participate in determining the level of service, and they have their input, but it is ultimately the school, and it's the final recommendation of what the level of service.
Mr. Scotts father.
How much is a conference now, approximately?
I'm thinking around 700,000 for transportation costs.
Hundred days, it's close to a million dollars. We fought this fight before years ago, preschool, the mandate on the county and buying transportation.
You know, again, I think the school wasn't bothering me any more than some of the other things. I mean, you, you have to stay constantly telling me, you need to consolidate, you need to provide services. And then we say, well, wait a minute, you know, we're picking up kids and, and you got a bus running right by, and don't pick them up. That doesn't make sense, you know?
There's so much hypocrisy in Alabama right now. It turns my stomach. Seriously, it's, it's absolutely disgusting.
Further discussion on this? Do you need none? Roll call, please?
Mr. Harrington?
Yes.
Mr. Maryho? Mr. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Depot?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Monti?
Yes.
Mr. McNally?
Yes.
Mr. Skozbaba?
Yes.
Mr. Deloria?
Yes.
Mr. Fleety?
Yes.
Mrs. Cecilia?
Yes.
Mr. Marnell?
Yes.
Mr. Montra?
Yes.
Mr. Jordano?
Yes.
Mr. Tyler?
Yes.
Mr. Blumen?
Yes.
And Mr. Preston?
Yes.
Resolution carries.
Right, do you see more from the board? Uh, I just wanna go into brief, it's like a session, uh, here, leaving a place on a couple of matters, Empire State Trail, you know, there's the Brooklyn Southern.
Do you need a motion?
Yeah, motion and a second. All favor?
Aye.
Here, and, check. Under order, I need a motion to come out of, uh, we, we left a executive session, the time now is a little, seven o' decisions were
the time now is a little, seven no decisions, we're May, I need a motion to come out of executive session. Mr. Geerdonne, second, by Mr. Deloria, all favor?
Aye.
Those carries, we are out of, we are in regular session at this time. Um, we have a, a matter that, uh, come before, which is the, uh, approval or disapproval of the contract, um, with the New York State D O T in regards to use of county roads for, um, the Empire, uh, State Bike Trail. Um, they've asked for a decision this month, so I need a resolution, uh, to go forward with that, uh, with, um, with that contract.
Twelve.
Now, you have twelve, it's on the floor, please?
Yes, we do.
Thank you. Motion? Mr. McNally, second. Thank you, Mr. Deloria. Discussion? Mr. Jackson?
I propose to this, uh, three reasons. The first is, I think, when you put a sign up saying this is a bicycle route, that's in telling people it's a safe place to bike, and I don't think that, at least in my town area, they selected as one stretch that I don't consider safe. I try to discourage people in my town from walking and biking there, and I certainly don't want to stake putting up a sign encouraging people to, unless they're willing to spend some money to fix the problem of no shoulder, uh, and a blind curve, or people are likely to get hit, so that's, that's my problem with it.
Mr. Harrington?
I believe it's a natural assumption by bicyclists that when they research their trams and they see that it is endorsed by the state, that they are going to feel that accommodations have been made for their safety, and that is not the case.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Ignan?
I, I just have a couple of comments, as I commented before in the last meeting when they came, uh, I have concerns with, uh, liability, uh, once we assume the duty to maintain these portions of the road for bike track, uh, and there are signs put up, we bought into that, that's us, and if we don't, that, if, if there's accidents there, it's going to be on us. Simply ask the state to, to help us out there, and rate of gentrifying, hold on, that such a, that should occur, it's their bike path, um, and they're not willing to do that. The second most important point, Jim, you made this point also, both these points, is just the maintenance aspect. You know, we're going to, if we sign up for this, we could be maintaining these things in perpetuity, uh, which could be quite expensive to do that. Also, we have the rock foot issue, and other issues that are probably similar to that along the path, where the state needs to do something to make it safe, uh, because as Charlie said, people assume that these routes are, are fit for their travel, and, uh, when they're, you're taking your family along the rock, I'd say you're, you're faced with this, if you don't know what to do, what are you going to, turn around and go back? Uh, or push on and risk your family? They're all issues, uh, I think we're all in favor of a bike trail, we don't like to be, uh, contrary, or contrarians, but, I mean, maintenance liability and safety issues are concerns. Um, by the same token, we certainly want to have a bike trail, we want, we want bike trails, so those are some things that should be considered.
Thank you. Further discussion? Ignan, roll call, please?
Mr. Harrington?
Yeah.
Mr. Maryho?
No.
Mr. Jackson?
No.
Mr. Depot?
No.
Mr. Wilson?
No.
Mr. Monty?
No.
Mr. McNally?
No.
Mr. Scazaba?
No.
Mr. Deloria?
No.
Mr. Fleedy?
No.
Mrs. DeZelio?
No.
Mr. Marnell?
No.
Mr. Montre?
No.
Mr. Giordano?
No.
Mr. Tyler?
No.
Mr. Gloulin?
No.
And Mr. Preston?
No.
Resolution is defeated.
Thank you. Anything further to come before the board's advisors? Do you need none?